You, I see you.
Okay, got it.
So whoever's speaking is probably going to come up biggest on your screen.
Well, no, I mean, I have nothing here. Just, okay, now I'm back. Join the meeting. Okay, come on. Leave a meeting. All right, yeah, let's take, okay, let me just expand this. Gallery. Okay, now I got everyone. Now I have it. Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order and it's 7:06. And knock, knock, that's it. Okay, so the reason we're here, and I think I might turn to Jennifer for some guidance as far as the verbiage goes, or Maureen.
Before we get started, can I do the roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. June Daly.
Here.
Andrew Lou Millard.
Here.
Diane Jorsey.
Here.
Tim Ziegler.
Yeah.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Joan Bealy.
Here.
Scott Hamel. Excused, I think.
Yeah, I believe he.
To be excused, Nikki asked to be excused, and Steve Biella Jr. Also excused.
Okay.
And on the agenda, we also have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, I don't have a flag here. Can we forego the Pledge of Allegiance?
Or we can say it without the flag.
Okay, if you wish. I'll have you plead, Diane.
Yeah, pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, United States of America. To the Republic. Which it stands.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible.
Invisible.
With liberty. And justice for all.
Yee-haw. Okay, thank you. All right, and then the next item on the agenda is the reason we're here. It's a discussion for us and we're gonna get some guidance and we're gonna have a nice little chat with our attorney Jennifer and also Maureen Juisty. So which of you ladies would like to start off?
I will start. Can everybody hear me okay? I have my. Okay, good. So we did, staff and I did call this meeting tonight because we wanted to address what transpired at your March 2nd, 2023 meeting with regard to the deliberation and vote and a subsequent comment that was made on the record regarding same by one of your commission members on the zone change application for the subject application that's been noticed on the agenda for 550, 554 Berlin Turnpike. So I, I'm gonna start off with my comments. I do have a specific recommendation for you as counsel to the commission with regard to that vote. And I'm specifically, I want to address the issue of member eligibility to vote based on comments that were made by Commissioner Zigma immediately following the March 2nd vote again on the zone change application specifically for the property. There's obviously, as you're aware, and I want to just sort of revisit the fact that, you know, there was a prior application set that had been heard with respect to the subject properties and, and that concluded about a year ago, at which time when the, the application set was withdrawn. And so the combined public hearing for the application set that's an issue commenced at the October 6, 2022 commission meeting. It was heard over the course of five meetings on that date of October 6, 2022, as well as November 3rd, December 1st, December 15th, 2022, and January 12th of 2023. Deliberation on the zone change application again was held on March 2nd of 2023, so your last regular meeting. And a vote to deny the zone change carried five to two, so five in favor. The five in favor were of denial were Commissioners Veely, Jorsey, Rogan, Millard, and Hamel. And two were opposed, Commissioners Zigma and Daly. Following the completion of the vote, Commissioner Zigma stated on the record, and I'm not gonna say it in its entirety, but he began indicating that there was a procedural issue to the chair, and he said, "We have an issue here. We have our new commissioners on the thing. This application has, has been almost a year old and I don't think the new commissioners on here have reviewed the items." And I questioned, without reviewing the items and going through all the maps and all the stuff that was presented to us through the public hearing, that decisions could be made. So, and he went on. So what we did, Maureen and I, Maureen, as your planner and your chief support staff and myself as your counsel, is we both reviewed the public records regarding the meetings at which the combined public hearing again on this application set that's an issue was held and determined the following with respect to the attendance of the commission members who voted. So Commissioners Veely, Jorsey, Rogan, and Zigma attended all the meetings at which the combined public hearing was held, so all five of those meeting dates that, that I just identified. Andrew Lou Millard was appointed to serve on the commission by the town council and it's September 20th, 22 meeting to serve a term to expire on January 31st, 2026. She attended all five of the meetings at which the combined public hearing was held. June Daly was appointed to serve on the commission by the town council and it's September 20th, 22, 2022 meeting to serve a term to expire on January 31st, 2023. She attended all five meetings at which the combined public hearing was held and, and she was also reappointed at the council's January 17th, 2023 meeting to serve until January 31st, 2028. I just want to mention that, you know, her eligibility continued to be able to vote. And then Scott Hamel vacated his position on the commission in October of 2022 and was subsequently reappointed. While the public records reflected that he did sit on the first application set, the public, the first round of public hearings prior to withdrawal of that application set, he did not participate in any of the meetings at which this combined public hearing at issue was held. So I've determined that he was not eligible to sit and vote on the zone change application. There's no indication in the record that was given that he had, I do believe he reviewed because of when he came off the commission, he did review the initial submission, the meeting packet for the October 6th meeting. There's nothing to reflect that he did in fact review the proceedings of those five nights of, of public hearing on, again, this combined public hearing for, for the plan set that's an issue, or the application set an issue. So again, he should not have participated in the vote. So given that, it's my recommendation to you that you move to rescind that, that vote to deny the zone change application that, that was, that decision that was made on March 2nd, 2023 to reconsider the zone change application. So that's our first order of business for tonight. Does anyone have any questions for me?
No. No, I think you've made that pretty clear. You obviously did a lot of back work on that. And I would just ask the commission that we go ahead and have a motion.
I'm. I do have, I do have one question, just.
Oh, okay.
Where we go. Jennifer, the decision has not been published, correct?
No, it has not.
Okay. Brian, I think you were gonna do it, otherwise I'll do it.
Sure, I'll make the motion to rescind the denial.
Okay, we have the motion to rescind the denial. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Diane, and further discussion on this item. So all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Can I take a roll on that?
Yes, go right ahead, Maureen.
Thank you.
Oh, meeting, I think that's necessary.
Diane, wanna pose? Let's ask that. Okay, so you know, you know who voted in favor of that?
Diane Jorsey.
Aye.
Tim Ziegler.
Aye.
Andrew Millard.
Aye.
Joan Bealy.
Aye.
Brian Rogan.
Aye.
June Daly.
Aye.
I got everyone right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So I just wanna make note, in terms of reconsideration now as we move on to redeliberation of the zone change application, I just wanna make note again for the record that the four commissioners who voted to rescind would sit on the redeliberation of the zone change application, and those commissioners again are Chairman Veely, Vice Chair Jorsey, your secretary, Mr. Rogan, Mr. Zigma, Ms. Daly, and Ms. Millard. I've determined that it would not be appropriate of a two-seat Nikki, as she did, one of the other things that I did look at, and I didn't mention this earlier, but I did look at whether Nikki was eligible to sit. She did miss the second night of public hearing and it was not reflected in the record that she had reviewed all of the pertinent documents, well, really the recording with regard to that meeting. So I determined that it was not appropriate for her to sit on, again, the redeliberation of the zone change application. So going forward, we do have, Maureen and I discussed, we do have some guidance for you. Obviously, you know, to, to get to this point to, that we're at now, we did review all of the recordings of the, the nights of, of the meeting nights that constituted the public hearing and, and very closely, of course, your, your deliberation that on, on the motion to deny. And, and we do want to just offer you, as you go in to the new deliberation, some guidance and, and a recommendation, a very specific recommendation. So I wanna undertake to do that now. I know that many of you are, are obviously seasoned members of the commission. And I think that most of you participated in, in Saturday's training. But I just, you know, wanna revisit with you that obviously the decision by statute, the decision to to approve a zone change is a legislative decision. You do have broad discretion. However, of course, your decision needs to be based upon the information that's received in your record and very importantly, consideration of your comprehensive plan, which is of course your zoning regulations. And then additionally, you have the advisory document of the plan of conservation and plan of concert, conservation and development as well. And, you know, so you're giving consideration about the suitability of the zone change in looking not only at what the requirements are of the regulations for the particular zones and issue the zone that, that is the underlying zone, original zone, and then, of course, the zone that's being proposed to be changed too. But, you know, you're, you're really focusing on the purposes of those zones. It's important that in terms of other considerations that you're not mixing consideration of the other applications that are involved in terms of develop, the development applications, whether it's a special permit and a site plan or just a site plan. So I just wanna point that out because I think that that's important procedurally to make sure that, that you're focusing. You know, and I know that because we combine the public hearing, that sometimes it's easy to lose sight of. The other thing that I was concerned about was, you know, the, the question, you know, the comment was made and I, and I've articulated this by one of your commission members that, you know, the application had been around for about a year. You gotta remember that, that prior application it set was withdrawn. So you're focusing on what the record was on, on the more recent combined public hearing. And I wanna make sure, and, and again, I said, I'm gonna make a recommendation to you and, and I think staff supports this recommendation and I'm gonna let Maureen kinda jump in here, but I'm gonna make a recommendation to you and I think it'll kind of become kind of clear too from Maureen's comments, that, that you do review the recordings of the five nights of, of the public hearing. They are available through the town's YouTube channel as well as, and we know you've all received all the, the meeting packet material. You've received all the submissions that you do that before your meeting on Thursday and that you do continue this, this deliberation, this redeliberation of the zone change application. So I may have some additional comments or a few other things I wanna point out, but I'm gonna let Maureen jump in. I think I've, I've taken enough time at this point. Maureen, why don't, why don't you go ahead and then if I feel like I wanna interject at the end, I will. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
It's a little odd being remote because I'm so used to seeing you guys in person. Go ahead, go ahead, Maureen.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna kind of dogtail off of what Jennifer started with, but I do wanna remind you that a lot of this information is in the record and in the staff, the information is in the record and in the staff reports, but kind of focus you on, on some specifics things to think about when you're thinking about a zone change and, and some of the substantive information that was stated. And I'm gonna point you towards Dr. Poland's staff report, which also comments on, on the standards for review for a zone changer application. The, and Jennifer covered the general guidance. What I'm gonna jump to is the purposes of the zone. As she stated, you know, you wanna talk about the, the zone considerations, zone change considerations. And I'm just gonna quote from the regulations for you. You all have copies of the regulations. They're also online. And if you need anything, let us know. "The purpose of the BT1 zone, the purpose is to provide for a range of commercial and related uses that are appropriate to the unique nature of the properties along the Berlin Turnpike and do not have detrimental impacts on nearby residential properties." So that's the underlying zone that's in the BT1, that, that's, that's the zone that's there now, that's being considered for rezoning and the rezoning to a BTD would be on top of the underlying zoning. "The purpose of the BTD zone is multiple parts." I'm gonna read, you know, the general statement, but then you're, we're gonna hear about the, the specifics. "The purpose, the six, this section of the regulations is intended to allow the commission to modify some of the use and dimensional standards in the underlying zoning districts of BT1, BT2, or PSB zones along the Berlin Turnpike in order to, A, promote the development of a mixed-use development, including housing opportunities in close proximity to the Berlin Turnpike's commercial uses to encourage and inspire commercial development along the road frontage of the Berlin Turnpike. B, to provide for a variety and diversity of housing opportunities in Berlin to meet residential demands in the town of Berlin by providing opportunities for current Berlin residents to age in place and provide housing opportunities in Berlin for the growing industrial and commercial sector labor forces. C, provide affordable housing opportunities that will contribute to Berlin's affordable housing stock with size and quality of housing that is comparable to market rate housing opportunities. Encourage the commercial, D, encourage the commercial development along the Berlin Turnpike by allowing and encouraging the consumers and the local labor forces to live within walking distance or in close proximity to the commercial uses along the Berlin Turnpike. E, ensure high-quality site planning, architecture, and landscape design that will complement and enhance the area surrounding the Berlin Turnpike. And F, offer open spaces and other public amenities for the direct benefit of both the uses in the development and the Berlin community at large." I'll note in that, that, or with that, that the, while the planning consultant, Dr. Poland, stated he found no inconsistencies or conflicts, as he noted, this determination is the commission's to make. But the commission should discuss in their deliberations the consistency or the conflicts found while they make those, during that deliberation or motion. And then the other part of what we've been working on is looking at the record. We found that there were, oh, Jennifer said that, two separate records. As we were looking for, we found out there were some points made and some information that were concerned needs to be clarified. It was either the way it was stated was confusing or misspoken. It was just some confusing information. So I'd like to just review that. So the record is straight. Everybody remembers correct information. The BTD zone, let's see, the BTD zone was established in the regulations in 2019. I believe it's 2019, I'm May 18th. Sorry, I was gonna double check that, that amendment date and I did not. And the applications need to be considered under the regulations as they exist today. While we do have the strategy, we've talked a lot about the BTD zone in different, for different purposes and at different meetings over the last year or so, both during the development of the Affordable Housing Plan, during the POCD process with the POCD consultant who's also charged with looking at the BTD zone and that's all underway. All those other factors are not, can't play into this application. This application was submitted under the regulations as they stand today. So those are the regulations that an application needs to be evaluated under and in, and prior to the moratorium being put in place. So it's the regulations that were in place at the date that the submission was, was made. The surrounding uses in the categories and zones. The BT1 zone is the existing zone. It's a commercial zone. And one of the uses allowed within the zone is a special permit use is building supply. The existing AC, ABC supply is therefore a commercial category for building supply. And at the easterly end of Woodlawn, although those properties, which are the properties that are adjacent to the subject property, are also zoned BT1. And while it was noted by the applicant during their presentation that there are industrials uses that sit to the south of the property, those industrial uses are existing non-conforming uses in the BT1 zone. So the abutting zone is also BT1 to the south. Again, the, the zone change is a legislative task of the Planning and Zoning Commission and then you'll get separately, as, as Attorney Capola mentioned, separately into the site plan and special permit considerations that are listed in the regulations under a different set of parameters. I think I've covered most of my notes on this. I'm gonna re-review them. But Jennifer, do we have anything else that I should be mentioning, what we?
So Maureen, Jennifer, if I can, just so I can clarify that I understand. So we're looking at the zone change only.
Well, that, that's, that's where you're at, at this point. Again, you are redeliberating the zone change. Yes, that is, that is true. That is true.
Can, I just wanna clarify that at the, at the March 2nd meeting, the motion was made to consider the site plan applica, site plan and special permit application at the meeting on the 16th. So it was continued to the 16th and then the site plan shouldn't be deliberated tonight as that was posted for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Or announced for the next meeting.
Okay, all right. I just, I just wanna make sure that everyone's clear on what the action needed moving forward is.
Now, one of the things, if I, if I may, I'm sorry. Um, I think unless there's another point to, from our standpoint to make. One of the questions that we have is you've now, to recap, you've made the motion to rescind and, and you've approved rescinding the decision from the second. So you now have a new, a decision that is the decision to rescind. You still have to make the decisions on both applications by Saturday, by statutory timelines. So therefore, by Thursday, presumably on Thursday night at your regular meeting would be when you would make, or finalize the decisions at the last, the last opportunity. We, we'd like to recommend that you consider asking us to draft possible motions for both the zone change, either or, or both, the zone change or, and/or the special permit and site plan, both in, both reasons for approval and reason, with reasons for denial. So that we then present those to you on Thursday night for your consideration. That would be our suggestion.
Okay. All right. Well, it sounds like a sound one.
Just again, in, in the interim, in terms of the BTD zone, it was passed, and this is, is on page 119 of your regs at the beginning of it. It was passed in 2019, May 9th of 2019. I just wanna emphasize too, and I know, again, I know you're aware of this, but it doesn't hurt to say it. But if you approve the zone change on redeliberation, you've gotta keep in mind the criteria for approval. You know, you have specific criteria in, in your BTD zone reg. So you wanna revisit that to take a look at that for Thursday night for new deliberate on the special permit and site plan as well. So that's important. So in terms of looking at that reg, again, on page 119, and I'll, and I'll send you an email after the meeting too. It's the BTD zone reg, it's page 118. The BT1 zone, Maureen read from the purpose of BT1 as well, begins on page 76 of your regs. I could also send you the zone change statute. And I did make the recommendation at the end of my comments again, that between now and Thursday, I would recommend that you do review the recording from, again, those five nights of, of public hearing on this application set to re-familiarize yourself. Make sure that you're clear in your mind, the record on this application set. the record on this application set versus the earlier. Because I think I, you know, in looking at the earlier set, and I think this is, you know, what confused Mr. Hamon was he sat on some of those meetings. You know, and all the, Ms. Veely, Ms. Jorsy, Mr. Zigmatt, Mr. Rogan, you all sat. So I want to make sure again that, you know, you're not thinking about the prior record versus this record. I think it is a good exercise for you because, you know, again, there were multiple nights, there were many revisions that were made to the plans. You, you received a lot of information. So I think that that's a good exercise for you to do. But that's, that's it. I don't, I don't really have anything else to add. I can, to make things easier for you, give you, you know, links to the recording in the YouTube and tell you exactly where, you know, the public hearing and the continuation of the public hearing over the course of those meetings, where they start so that you're not having to spend time looking around. It'll make it a lot quicker for you because I did note those. So I'm happy to apply that.
So as you went through that painful exercise, you were, you were kind enough and smart enough to write all that stuff down. So we can link it through.
I really.
That would be recording. So that would be wonderful. That would be an excellent. I know that I would appreciate it because then it would be easier for me here to just get right to it, although I don't think a lot of us who sat through those meetings because they were so long. And I, I don't think that we'll forget it that easily, but it would be nice to refresh it. That's for sure.
Do, do you have any questions for us?
I, yeah, I just have a, this is June. My question is, just going back to the recent comment is a recommendation to us is to have you write up an approval or denial. Would that be a recommendation that's made tonight?
So that's, that's something that we have done in, in the past. I know that I do it periodically. I just did one recently on a wetlands application. And I, you know, I always, you know, we're, we're here to offer guidance and support. We are not here to interfere as your council, your staff in terms of your, your decision-making and your discretion. So, you know, I always say, you know, unless, unless the consensus is to direct us in, in one direction or another, I, I feel like on, on the Rio Vista matter, we were directed to do specifically a motion for, or motions for denial with reasons as opposed to doing both. But typically, I always offer, you know, if you want both, you know, if there isn't a consensus, you know, to, that, that we certainly can, can prepare both. And then I'll leave it for your discussion on, you know, in reflecting upon the record, what you think, because sometimes that helps to, to sort of elucidate the finer points. So that is something that I, that I do. And I did, actually did recently on a, I don't know, Wetlands matter that involved quite a bit of disturbance for, for another town.
But Jennifer, we were supposed to give you, if we were to give you direction today as to what the, you know, approval or denial would be, then wouldn't we now have to deliberate that again today? Or would we have to clarify our reasons today?
Um, no, you would be, you would be directing us one way or the other. That's okay to do that. And then, you know, we would present the motion to you in the, in the public meeting on, on Thursday. You know. Yeah, that, that, because, you know, we did do that on Rio Vista, I remember. Is the one that I remember specifically for you is that, you know, there was an initial deliberation on it. And it was garnered that there was a consensus to, you know, to deny the application. So specifically, you only wanted to see what potential reasons of denial might be. And, you know, look, I, 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 you know, I always say this. You know, you are the decision makers. We do not have a vote. You know, sometimes as council members try to, or board members try to push me into making a specific recommendation. And that's not what we're here for, you know. So, you know, we're happy to do both. You know, if, if you'd like to see both, you know, that's something that, that certainly we're happy to do.
In, in listening to that training we did on Saturday, and I thought that was a great opportunity. I appreciated sitting through that. It seemed like a short webinar, so I enjoyed it. One of the takeaways for me was that having a public hearing on Thursday, we still may need to be objective at this point to be available to adjust our thinking for any new information that's being provided in the public hearing. But if, if you think it's appropriate or available to give us both sides, approval or denial, suggestions or a write-up or something, I mean, I would be open to that for consideration on Thursday because it seems to be fair to the application to still remain available to hear discussion.
So I just want to emphasize to you that you are no longer in public hearing on this.
Oh, okay.
You're still in deliberation. And again, you know, these fine points, right? So we do not have the ability to introduce in the deliberation session and neither do you as members, any new evidence. You know, our, our potential reasons for approval and denial would be based on the record that's before you. So it would not be based on any, anything new that, that came to light or anything like that. You know, following, following the close of the public hearing, which the close of this public hearing occurred at that last meeting day in January, on January 12th.
So, okay. Thank you. I thought in our conversation today, it was stated, when we go back to public hearing on Thursday, that's where I was misunderstanding. So thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah. And I apologize, apologize if I said that. I think I said the, it's still, your deliberation must by statute be a, a public meeting. So any interested members of the public can, can observe the actual deliberation. That's another important point. I do get asked very often whether or not there could be an executive session during deliberation. So I hope that you learned, that was one of the things that you learned on Saturday, that no, you cannot have an executive session to deliberate. Yeah. That's a common question.
But then I would make a motion to have staff and attorney to draw up motions in both ways, the for or against, and have that available for our consideration at the Thursday meeting.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Zigmatt. Do we have a second?
I second.
June. Okay. So June, and do we have further discussion on this? So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do a roll call on that or, or anyone opposed? Okay, hearing none. Okay.
Do I need a roll call, Jennifer? I don't think I do. We had no, well, I don't know what Brian lit up.
I know. Yeah, Brian did that. I noticed that as well, although he is unmuted. Brian, was that an aye for the, for that motion?
Correct. That was an aye.
Okay. All righty.
And we did have Andra as well.
Yes, aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there, um, now, Maureen, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda here. I apologize. Is there any other business?
No, that was the only business on.
And Jennifer, you said that you were going to send over the links with the quick shortcuts over to those meetings. So.
And I will, I will do that and my email will become part of the record as well. I will take care of that for you.
Okay. Are you sending that to the town emails or are we sending it all to personal emails?
I will send it to all the emails that I have for you.
Okay.
I'll do both. I typically do try to do that. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I'll know which one to look for. Okay. So seeing that we have no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:46.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you, Diane. Do we have a second?
Aye, my second.
Andra seconds for the discussion on this. So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 And those opposed, so move, motion moves. Okay, everyone. Have a good evening and.
Thank you. Thanks very much for your time.
No, thank you.
For being available.
Did great work. All right. See you Thursday. All right. Yes. Diane, you do a great job.
Thank you.